Last week, the plan was turned down because we actually had a kind of a mess of our, what our women said. And if you remember, at the last meeting, I said we were getting kind of loose on this and we needed to tighten it up a little bit. I think that's where we are, that's where we made the mistakes. I'm not going to make excuses, but you know, we did get this stuff late in the game and we didn't give it reasonable time for discussion. We have until May, I'm not sure exactly what the date is right now.
May 8.
Maybe somebody else, May 8. We don't intend to take that much time. We will get done a little sooner than that, just so we can give it to the administration before they have turned into the commission. We will work very closely with the state auditor, Laura Brown, on our proposal. And saving time on some of this, a couple of things that I want to put in right away is, you know, we didn't, the plan was not rejected because of what our intent was. When we passed the ordinance, whatever that was, two weeks ago or three weeks ago, Perry had given us a very clear sample of what we wanted that plan to say. And we submitted that, and then we also resubmitted the mayor's language, and in that there was the language on the property tax and stuff. So that's where the problems came in. And like I said, there were, Michelle was there, Ed was there, I was there, Nancy was there, and like I said, Diane was there. So if anybody disagrees with anything I said or wants to add to it, it's my intention to start the lorum on the original plan that we had as far as the income tax and the two ordinances that would apply to the income tax tax credit coming off if the income tax passes and goes to 2%. And also the street lighting ordinance that is what, $25 a year on that? So I intend to ask them to can't cost that out. Another thing that came up there was discussion about the police. I don't know if you heard any of it, Mr. Chauvin, but you guys can throw your two cents in here, but what I said and listened to is Laura Brown describing that ordinance and saying that it didn't look like there was a lot of savings up front the first year or two, there might be some costs, and we know that because of training and testing and all these other things. But she did state that, starting in the third year, there were savings there. Personally, I was a little hesitant about this ordinance when we first passed it, but after I sat and listened to that, I think we are right on track with what we were discussing there. Something that some of the commission members voiced is they don't want us to just take this and put this proposal together, clean it up, and send it back to them as this. That's not saying they won't accept that, but they would like us to try to look for some additional savings. Myself, I know we talked about it some here a couple of weeks ago, and it'd be nice if we could find maybe another $100, $150,000 annually somewhere, if we could, to add to our plan. And then, I would say, I suppose we would send back to them. We will cost this out on the police and see exactly what it does amount to over a five-year period, and see if they agree with the numbers that you've come up with. If you saw Mr. Chauvin's email, Ms. Han or Han, Mrs. Han or Han, I thought he explained his position on that ordinance very clearly. And if there's any questions, I think they, there should not be any misunderstandings on it. So I intend to ask Laura Brown to cross those two things out for sure. I'm going to throw it out there for anything else anybody else wants to discuss, either what they heard at that meeting or the future of our plan that we're putting together. Yes?
First off, I'm sorry about being late to get it out to you guys. Anyone, maybe it's probably not received yet, but I sent an email to Diane, I received from Ms. Brown, and then asked Diane to forward it out to everybody on council. Last week, I asked Ms. Brown to tell us or what her opinion was as to the cost. If I can quickly pull it up, I will, if not, I won't waste our time. But essentially, what she was saying is that she feels that initially, there will be some upfront training costs, just like you said, and that the issue we may run into is that 2015, we operate at zero budget. We operated to the zero, or we budgeted to the zero, and then when we increase costs without receiving a savings in the same year, we're going to have to make that up somewhere in the budget. What she has here is currently, I'm reading from her email, "Currently, I calculated one new hire, starting work on 6/1/15. Once training costs and overtime savings are back then, this would cost the city approximately additional $12,000 in the '15 budget." She does go on to say, though, by 2017, you have a savings. The concern that I think she was voicing, what Ms. Han or Han is voicing, is that the current structure of the ordinance that we passed would make it so we'd start hiring officers this year, and there may not be enough time in the year to realize the savings from the training costs. Whereas if you have a whole year, you hire someone at the beginning of the year, you train them, and by the time you get to the end of the year, there could be some savings and the balance is just off. This is what they're reporting, and I wanted to report it back to the council. I don't, I mean, the answer is up to us what we want to do. I had mentioned before as to whether or not we want to stick at 18 months, or we want to reconsider the question and take it to 24 months. This would allow us to start hiring January 1 of '16 and start seeing savings. But at the same time, if it's only costing $12,000 to $24,000, if we get one recertification or something like that, that would swallow that up fairly easily. I just wanted to kind of put all the facts out there to council and discuss and consider.
Thanks for sharing that with me. I had not seen your email. There are really two issues concerning this police. One is the financial issue, which we're dealing with, not business fiscal recovery, but the other is a public safety issue. And I'll give you a perfect example of why I don't want to reconsider this, I want to move this ahead. The sooner we get to 44 people, the sooner we are going to be able to bring in a detective bureau and a special investigator unit. You know, we all know that there was an alleged homicide this weekend, bodies found in Central Park. What you may not know is that the Bureau of Criminal Investigation on Columbus is taking the lead on this because we don't have a detective bureau. They made a statement that a city the size of Massillon, their normal role is to back up the city's investigative unit and basically collect evidence and process it at their prime lab. This is very unusual for them to come to a city the size of Massillon and take the lead on the investigation. We basically have two guys that operate as what I would call a youth utility detective. We have Jason Volpe, whose main job is to take care of evidence from robberies, crime scenes, what have you. And Dave McConnell, who does basically sex crimes, crimes against children. Those are pretty much full-time jobs, as it is now. So according to what I've been told as I talk to people today, a crime like the one that we just had this weekend, you need at least one person working nothing but their time dedicated to this. I think, you know, you can, you can make the financial argument for a while before this off, but there's a, there's a public safety issue that if it's going to cost us $12,000, I say we find $12,000 somewhere rather than trying to delay this anymore. The other issue, and I sent you all that email today, is I think the city's labor attorney is under the idea that by passing this legislation, it will tie her hands during negotiations. And just the opposite is what the truth of matter would be. You know, I can't go into a lot of details because I'm not getting all these negotiating meetings, but I know that since this past, there is a willingness from the police department and the negotiating committee to actually be proactive with some ideas on how they can work to save the city some money while increasing public safety. And I know they're more than ready to work with the administrations at that end. Had this legislation not passed, we'd be back where we were before, and we'd have a more than a antagonistic role from both sides. So I would have to respectfully disagree with Leslie Coles, which negatively affect negotiations. Time to tell, but with this all said and done, I think we'll see the other work office.
I own a full agreement with Mr. Chauvin. You know, when they first started putting these numbers together, I started thinking about, you know, is it worthwhile to delay this and put a different, I even, you know, I mentioned something, Mr. Chauvin, should we put a 24-month timeframe instead of 18-month timeframe, giving us the additional six months to fulfill? I guess my thing now is, I think the 18-month can work. However, when we go to the commission with the new plan, we have to, Ms. Han or Han did respond to Mr. Chauvin today, and we have to include the hiring of these officers in the plan, and also make sure that Ms. Brown has something to calculate. What she's requesting to calculate is an approximate schedule of hiring. So is it two officers this year, two more at the beginning of next year, two more at the middle of next year, just so she can better forecast? So I think that's a reasonable recommendation. So for this year, we need to make sure that we also include some sort of savings, essentially, essentially, Mr. Manchin was going to do, to offset the cost of whatever officer we hired this year. That way, we still operate on that zero budget. They will not buy into the, oh, we're going to recertify later in the year, we'll use that money. That's not going to fly with the commission. It's not even really that smart with budgeting practice. So we want to make sure that we find that money and put it in place ahead of time. And as far as the negotiations go with that Mr. Chauvin is speaking to, I agree as well. You know, I sat there, I was speaking with my wife, and I told her that I don't feel like the safety of our citizens or officers is a negotiation tool, and if this improves safety, then we need to do so.
Just one more point, if I can make sense to what you're talking about. The other thing, as far as the timing of bringing officers on, if there's an ordinance in place now and the, and people that might not have taken a civil service test for fear of being laid off right away, what's going to happen now when we give these tests is we're going to find people that are already certified by the state of Ohio as police officers. So instead of having to go through the four or five month certification program when they go to school, now we're looking at maybe a 12-week field training program. So we can bring people on. The issue is going to be, how many can we get through field training? And that's a function of the certified field training officers that we have on the board.
Professional inquiry, I guess, taking this legislation aside, I believe there were retirements or other people leaving. How many officers were we trying to hire?
Eight, to get to 44?
No, no, no. Like I said, take that legislation aside. Weren't we already anticipating hiring a few officers this year?
I've never been able on that. I mean, we gave tests in January, we did backgrounds on like eight or 10. I think they were trying to narrow down to maybe like maybe three people, but not really those officers are going to be not here.
I guess where I'm getting, where I'm going with this is, the budget that we have, were those accounted for? Because the civil, like you said, the civil service test was given earlier, prior to this legislation. So when we're talking about the plan, and we said how we're going to incorporate this into the plan, were those already allotted for in the budget? And then if we have to get, you said eight, to get to the 44, how does that work into the rest of the plan? That's where I'm going with this.
From my understanding of the budget discussions that we had, when speaking with Mr. Coler, I can remember distinctly, he had made a reference to, I believe it was the Civil Service Department, their budget, I have to look at the budget exactly, but their budget, I believe, was a little bit increased this year to compensate for the test fees. From that, I also took from him that the police budget has been fully funded, and they should be able to support those hires in the conversation I had. Was the question correctly asked? I cannot recall this time, I'd have to look over the notes or whatnot that we have, but I was always under that impression.
That's where I'm getting, like I said, that's where I'm going, is that may affect our plan of, okay, there's already a lot for to hire, two or three people this year, and we're working with 18-month timeframe, and then what is it for next year?
I think that in budgeting, I asked Ken that, and I thought he told me that there were, I want to say 39, that he was thinking this year, which would be a higher of three people. I'll have to double check again because I haven't checked that one, but we'll take that as gospel. I think that's, when I asked him about the numbers that were in the budget, I think he was looking at 11 to 39 people, which would be hiring three from this year, and currently.
I think what this guy's might be hinting to is, are you maybe hinting to that we can't possibly field test every, or field train every test month, or?
No, no, no. What I'm getting at is, you were saying about part of the fiscal plan, as suggested by the commission, is since we pass that ordinance and they want some sort of plan of us working into, since we put a timeframe on, timeframe on it of 18 months, we're obviously not going to hire all the officers in 2015, or we wait until 2016, how does that catch up in our plan? So that's what I was asking, if we, if, when the 2015 budget was developed, if those officers were already, if the budget was drafted in anticipation of already hiring possibly two or three people because of those civil service tests that were given prior to that legislation, that may work into the plan as being those officers for this year?
Yeah, we're going to hire three next year.
Yes. And then how does next year work out?
Basically, you're saying what's, how many officers did we budget for, right?
Yes. Because I think that'll work into the plan with the legislation.
38 or 39, then?
33.
You guys don't understand, I'll be honest with you.
I just ran into John Roffelsberger last week and had asked him about the firemen that just had started that Monday. And he had told me that he was, there were possibly two policemen that were getting ready to start two in the near future. So to your comment, you know, it sounds like that was already in worst regardless of the legislation that was passed. What if the magic number is, I don't know. He did not give me a timeframe, he just said tentative, that was in the worst.
So we really need to figure out the numbers of, what do we budget it for police officer-wise for the year? What do we budget the budget for? Was it 36, was it 38, was it 39? And then, because there might be a possibility that we can afford some of these new hires this year already, depending on what we budgeted for based on retirements hired.
Yeah, that's what I mean, I asked Ken that, and I was pretty sure that it was only 39 was the number to use.
And we only have what, 34 on staff right now?
36.
36? So that's three hires, that gets us close. I mean, I don't know how many more we can get this year.
Maybe not, that's why I said 18 months right now, I'm just trying to do it up this year. And then you're talking, it sounds like you're talking five more than next year. So I'm pretty much. I mean, if our, if our current level stays at 36, assuming nobody leaves, I mean, you know, we are, we're, I think there are some people that are eligible for a time, but I'm not sure that they're actually really eligible to do it this year. No point in getting them. It's, my question is, these people that are training, officers that are training, how soon can we expect them to be able to start helping us as far as the overtime situation? Not until they go to field training. While they're in school. About how long is that? 12 weeks probably. But they, that's assuming that they're already certified by the state of Ohio, they've been through the PADA or whatever, the police officer training academy. Because when they're doing that, they're not getting paid by the city, and so they don't get, they don't come onto the payroll until they start field training. But until they successfully complete field training, they can't be put into the rotation that would reduce overtime.
I guess what I would ask is, between you and Mr. Coler, the chief, or somebody, give us the approximate schedule here that we can, you guys feel free to do anything you want with Ms. Han or Han, Laura Brown, you know, if you have questions, call them, ask them, it doesn't matter. But as far as the plan that we're going to vote on finally, I want to, I'd like to see that funnel all through us and Diane, so we know exactly what we're talking about, so we're not all over the place on numbers. You know, hopefully, we're still going to come up with some more savings along the way here. I hope somebody comes up with some ideas. Like I said, they asked for it, if they're, you know, asked some of the other people there, Mr. Guest, or specifically said, you know, don't feel restricted to what your plan already is, that if you can come up with more ideas, either to increase revenue or to reduce costs.
Mr. Coler, do you think you could request from the chief and the administration, I guess, a schedule of hires? Is that way we can, if that comes around? Because I think the beauty of it is, because we all, we've all been understanding, under the understanding that we were going to be replacing the retirees, and from this conversation, those ones should already be essentially budgeted for, otherwise we were presented with a budget of false pretenses, effectively, obviously, that people that we were, in one hand paying the other test, but on the other hand, we weren't expecting to actually pay for every test. And so it's got to be in there, otherwise the budget wasn't truly zero anyways.
One question I had, it has nothing to do with the police, but I, I spent about an hour today with Steve DePietro, attorney of this facility, or Public Steel. And he told me that between, what was it, the two, the consulting company and the energy company that are over there, they have about 50 employees working there now. He estimated their average income to be in the 20 to low $20 per hour range. Do we know how, how we go about auditing companies like that to make sure when those people work in Massillon, we're getting our, our income tax? I mean, do you know if we do that? I don't, I don't know. Well, that's, I just put some rough numbers on it, and, you know, that could be about $45,000 worth of income tax this year. Steve also told me that when this project gets up and going, they're going to have 200 to 300 people that are working at that site. So now you're, I mean, you're talking, you know, a couple hundred thousand dollars additional revenue, if we stay on top of that. They will, you know, they'll rotate, I don't know if it'll be the same people there all the time, they're going to rotate people in and out. And there are some new businesses that are going in, there's a cement company that's going in, there are some other people he's talking to now that will find their home down there. So I mean, we could be realizing some pretty decent income tax revenue in the future.
Thank you. Even though I didn't answer his question.
That's fair.
All right. My question is, I may have missed this when I was out in the hall talking to John, but the, the, the plan got rejected and it came back to council, but is the mayor going to be included in this plan?
Well, she'd be part of it before it's over.
Okay. So we, we're going to give our plan to her then?
It's the same process. We put the plan together, our plan together again?
Well, before we waited for her to submit hers to us, and I know we kind of got jammed up on time with that, but I'm, you know, we keep talking about, you know, it being inclusive and all this other good stuff, but yeah. I was just wondering, where do you, do you stand on this? Are you going to participate with it, or are we supposed to present to you and get back to us if you have a plan that you're working on also?
Do you want me to come up?
Please. Hold on a minute, I mean, that's your, that's your problem.
Go ahead.
Members of council, I'll be happy to participate with your plan. So it really was a technicality that was the reason why the commission voted it down, and so it falls back to council to correct the technicality. And they truly stressed possibly changing it, and I think you're working with Laura and Sharon, and I think that's the right step, but I'll be happy to participate.
Mayor, back to the income tax question that Mr. Chauvin had, do we have anybody on staff that goes out and makes sure that these companies aren't paying our city income tax?
We actually have Ken Coler, and, excuse me, Ken did a fabulous job with Baker Hughes. We checked the people that worked there versus their income tax, and we did an audit, and we found that, I think the letter went out today, about $93,000. And so they have the opportunity to make that right now. So the letter did go out to Baker Hughes, so Ken will do that, and he's done a pretty good job, I think.
But should someone notify Mr. DePietro that they're supposed to be withholding?
Well, that, Steve has nothing to do with this. These are the, just the people that are leasing the property for him.
Oh, I see.
He just gave me heads up on how many people are there, companies.
Okay, we can't wait until it's done. Okay, well, we used to have it, but this person did that. I know we don't have that person anymore, but I just wonder if someone is, because there are a lot of people committing to this in Massillon, or leave, and they should be paying us the income tax.
Right. And I would say, see something, say something, so we don't miss something. All eyes are better, you know, than one set. And so if you see something out there that, you know, you'd like us to check, Ken is doing a great job, and he is only one person, and that's all that the budget brought out this time.
Yes?
I just want to talk about the meeting, and maybe I misunderstood, but it seemed to me like the commission was talking about if we go ahead with our income tax rates the way it's written now, and we eliminate the street lighting fee and the tax credit that we really won't be bringing in any more money. Is that, did I understand that correctly or not?
I'd say it was close, from what I heard. I know, I mean, you're talking about bringing in 1.4 to 1.6 million, and we talked about it a year ago, it's 1.66, I believe, but, you know, you're going to be giving back somewhere around 800,000.
So we?
So you, you would have a net increase, you'd still have a net increase.
Then you're, you're going to put that all into streets, so we really have no increase.
Well, that's where, I don't think we intend, we didn't intend to put it all in the streets. We had, the original plan had one tenth going to streets and...
My point is you should not really have very much money to put anywhere.
You should have 800,000.
Just to clarify what Mr. Coler was saying, we increase by point two, approximately one tenth of that would go to the general fund. The other, or one, not approximate, one tenth would go to, so point one goes to the general fund, point one goes to the vehicle, the street vehicle replacement program and to the streets department. Except, that's going to be another point, they want a certification by what we mean, Laura Brown needs to know that, but we can get to that in a moment. However, the one tenth that we're putting into the streets department, which would be approximately 800,000, would be swallowed up when we lose the street lighting fee revenue and when we lose the income tax credit reduction revenue, which equals about that 800,000. So to the general fund that becomes washed, the real gain comes in being able to start having some funding to work on our streets, vehicle replacements, things of that nature. Is that clarified?
I, I've talked to some people in the last couple of weeks, and I, we really, we couldn't really help to campaign to get this income tax passed.
Well, the only thing I can say is that, the last time when we voted, we thought we moved our plan forward, there was a whole lot of discussion about cuts. And Mr. Coler made the point that, you know, we are on an upswing here in the city, and if we're going to get something passed... And Mr. Coler made the point that, you know, we are on an upswing here in the city, and if we're going to get something passed, there's probably not a better time to try to do it than right now. But I don't think the income tax or a property tax increase, either one or a slam dunk, neither one. So, you know, and that's what it came down to. I mean, we can argue about cuts, but, you know, nobody was coming up with any suggestions on how we can reduce the amount of revenue we need. So we have to be looking at revenue increases. And there's only, I've only heard two plans forwarded by anybody so far. The income tax plan we talked about, and the mayor's plan on the property tax. That's the only two things I've heard. And I don't think, other than if we can find some more savings, I don't think there's, we need to go back and start reinventing the wheel at this point in time. I think we just need to make a choice between one or the other, and support it. And I'm open, I'm going to listen to anybody. If you got a way to help us get out of this box, let's hear it. But I mean, that's the two things that I see.
I've been having this conversation with a lot of people over the past couple of weeks, and I think it's a valid point. When you start sharing with people, hopefully people start to see it. We have nineteen and a half million dollars that we get to operate with on our general fund. Most people agree, we don't want a reduction in our police. In fact, we proved that we don't want a reduction around savings with increase. We don't want, or can be, have a reduction in our fire EMS. We have the courts, we all know what that is. We all want to go ahead and fight that beast, and I guess we all mount on our shields and our swords, and we go fight that beast. But until then, it's three and a half million dollars price. Well, when you don't touch the courts, then you can't handicap your law director, because your courts are demanding him to do things. If he can't do it, they're just going to serve some contract out to someone that can, and then demand you to give them the money anyways. And then you got your street department, can't cut streets, they're already failing and wash away as this. Once you add all that up, you have about fifteen and a half million dollars, the nineteen and a half million dollar budget. And we're trying to find a half a million dollar savings on four million dollars. And it's not going to be easy to find. You're talking about dramatic cuts. You're, you're cutting out whole departments, you're firing lame people off left and right to get to that half a million dollar number. It's really not there if we preserve all the services that citizens want to have preserved, or were mandated to preserve. So I don't know what else we can really do.
So we had the conversation two weeks ago with Ken about relooking at the budget. Maybe we go back to Ken and ask him to take the other departments that are left over, and come up with what would five percent cuts look like, what would seven percent cuts look like, what would ten percent cuts look like in those leftover departments? Just to at least have a guide in front of us to see, would it even, I mean, would it, are we talking just eighty thousand dollars in savings? Or are we talking two hundred thousand dollars in savings? Is it going to be a half a million dollars? But it may be something to get people halfway.
I think we're going to probably find that, you know, at five percent, we're going to be somewhere around the eighty thousand mark. And at ten percent, we'll be close to that two hundred thousand mark. The other thing I've been playing around in, and I know I'm going to really irritate a lot of people, is next year, essentially every elected official does start a new term. Which means this year, we can reduce elected officials' part pay. We could make every elected official in the city take a ten percent pay cut, and they couldn't say anything about it. It starts in twenty sixteen, and we lead by example before we start chopping the heads off our employees.
Savings is that.
It would be approximately, pay for it, it's somewhere around forty-five, fifty thousand, I believe, off the top of my head. Mr. Olson, I might be wrong. Tell me if you missed the rest.
Do you have a certain elected official that you can change your salary?
I didn't talk, I did not include judges in any of that.
What?
Or the court of court. Yeah, I did not touch theirs at all. That would just be the mayor, the auditor, the law director, every council member, and council president in the treasury, which treasury, you know. I mean, for many of us, the big savings were obviously in your mayor, your auditor, the law director, where you're getting five to seven thousand dollars off her on each one of them. You get, what, seven hundred dollars a piece a month of us? And, um, we might miss some, the treasury is getting fourteen hundred dollars off her, so it doesn't add up too much. And I apologize, if I have that particular document making any impact.
You know, if, no matter what kind of a tax, I mean, whether it's municipal tax or property tax, I mean, our problem is real, if you just outlined, if we can't generate revenue that way, then the only other thing to do to generate revenue is you've got to find additional fees. And let's face it, they're taxes. I mean, they're hidden taxes that the people don't vote on. I mean, I, I looked at, I have a friend of mine that owns a business up in Akron, and I think the city of Akron has a, like, an alarm registration fee. I think they charge every residence and every business like twenty bucks to register their alarm system. And then you get like so many false alarms, and then if it goes over that, I think it's like three false alarms. If it goes over that, you start charging people. It's like a hundred and fifty to a hundred and eighty dollars or something for response. I mean, these are the kind of fees that no, nobody wants to see. But if you've got to generate revenue, and you can't do it by passing taxes, I mean, what do you do? You can't shut down the city. You, I, I understand what you're talking about, you know, reducing ten percent of hours. It's a drop in the bucket compared to what you need to have had. So you have to start looking at other, other fees. You know, that's, I don't know where, what all they would be, but that's one that I know that Akron does.
We did pass an ordinance regarding so many false alarms, and then after a certain time, they had to pay a fee. Now, the key is, if anybody's paying attention to that charge and the fees, maybe that scenario we can look at to see if those things are being carried through. Probably they all need these rates.
With that ordinance, yeah, I do remember that was just specifically for the fire department when sprinkler system alarms go off.
No, that was for the fire department and the police department, because we, this was clear back in the old days.
Okay, well, I know you just did one recently, yeah, that was for the fire department, because they didn't want to be.
That was even the police, because there were a lot of homes at that time of charity garage, we had false alarms. And just regularly, the police were running up there, silent, what do they call it, silent?
Yeah, silent alarms.
And they were running up there all the time, and there was nothing going on. So if we passed that, probably some of those fees could be raised, but then, somebody's responsibility, you'd be sure to charge for it. And I'm not sure what the mechanism is for that.
Well, you know, maybe I can look at, see how Akron does it. I mean, I don't, I don't know. But they also, though, they have a registration fee. Everybody that has it pays like a twenty dollar. It's a one-time fee, it's not twenty dollars a year. I think it's just so they get on record who it is, who the owner is, who the monitoring company is, that, that type of information. Similar to what we do at vacant properties.
Yeah, what we did at the building department, we first go to council, similar to that. And that's worked very well.
If anything comes up to anybody, get an email, get it to Diane, and we will get it to the state auditor, and let them cost it for us. I will do some checking with Mr. Coler to see if there's any way we can get some kind of estimate of revenue maybe that would come in from the, you know, the developments already taking place in Maslin. We know the jobs are going to be there now. Like I said when we started, you said the same thing, basically, add a couple hundred thousand dollars. But I said to date, you heard the commission, they were asking us to try to find another hundred, a hundred and fifty thousand, whatever we could in additional, either revenue or savings or revenue. Add to our plan.
I want to correct my numbers, when I was talking about the elected official, that forty-five was over two years' term. When I originally calculated everything, so obviously for one year, you're going to have to cut that half to be right around the twenty-four, twenty-five mark. And you can implement it to twenty sixteen, so it wouldn't be twenty.
Mr. Nancy, do you know how far we're at with our debts? Are they about to be paid off?
I think other than long-term debt will occur on everything, I believe.
I know we're current, I want to know if it's paying anything off, we would have that money.
Um, I don't know what's going on with like the center phase two, but that's probably getting close.
We just did one last year.
Which one? Where did center phase two?
I think it's two, right?
Two. What about, do you know about the, I don't know what it was called now, might have been like the center phase three.
Yeah, we have some years on that yet.
Two years?
Some years, some years.
How many?
Some years. I don't know, it's off in my head. We can send you that if you like.
I just was curious, so it would be money to be cleared up.
Any else? Is, are we going to have anyone try to clean up the language for the income tax? And make sure that it is exactly like we want it to be?
Let me make it clear, there's nothing wrong with the language, it's paragraph. What we did is, we re-entered that with the mayor's plan, and still had the income tax.
I understand.
Or the property tax, okay?
But what I read, what they sent me, from what the packet that they received, the piece that they had with two boxes, I'm not so sure either box is correct.
Well, that's, what we can do is just leave all of that off.
They were not, that was my error.
That's, I understand that, Mr. Wilson, all I'm saying is, if both boxes were incorrect, no matter why they were incorrect, that's not relevant. I want to make sure we are looking at a clean copy.
Here's, and this is exactly what I said, you heard me say in the last meeting, we may get loose if we weren't doing what we were supposed to be doing. When we first started talking about it, I said, let's take the mayor's plan and go block by block through that, and make sure it fits to what we want, and that's what we will do. That should take care of what you're talking about.
I hope so.
Well, it should. If you don't think it is, say so. But I mean, that's what I wanted to do, and we did not do it. So I don't want to be beaten on this thing. If we made a mistake, it's over, it's done. But there's nothing wrong with the language as Perry Sturgis wrote that language. If we would have submitted that with none of that other crap in there. Okay? So that's all we're going to do, is go through that one paragraph at a time, and make sure it fits the plan that we are turning in. And take out.
Well, can we at least have cleanest copy, or the most accurate and upstate copy that we know of?
That's what we are going to do.
I sent that out Thursday after the meeting with the fiscal recovery commission, as it actually should have read, before it even appeared in the paper that I made the mistake. It should be attached to an email.
Yeah, that's the correct version.
That is the correct version.
Well, then, just so that we're all on the same page moving forward, when we're talking about this, the corrected version can act as our foundation in what we're all, we all have to work from the same document, that way we recommend a change.
We're going to get corrected as we go through it a paragraph at a time.
Well, okay, because the correct version is the one that we're going to be correcting.
Right. See the X dot stuff?
Yeah.
That was stuff that was not supposed to be in there. That was done before we sent it back. And I'm not, I'm not going to sit here and keep going on and on with this stuff.
I think the point is, next meeting, let's all just make sure we print out that version that Diane says, and that we're all looking at the same thing.
And then we'll start paragraph one.
Paragraph one, yeah.
Okay. But you all should have it in the email.
Yes, we did receive that.
Okay.
Okay? Anyone else? I don't have any else for tonight. All right. We will take some time, if we do finish the CDVG meeting early on Monday, since it's scheduled at six-thirty, we will try to spend a little bit of time on this before the meeting. And if we have anything left, we will talk after the meeting again.
We will talk about what we made this?
Well, we may have to.
Well, if we're talking after a public meeting, we can't move on to the process.
Well, we'll send that notice out, and that's what we're going to do. Which we used to let you know, Steve, that's what the intent is. If we have the meet, if we have the time, if we have the time after the CDVG meeting, we'll talk about it then. If we don't have the time, we will have a meeting after the regular council meeting.